We called a meeting order. I have a prayer. Lord, I'd like to thank you for just waking us this morning and allowing us to see another day, Lord. We know everything with you and nothing without you. And we give you all the glory and all the praise. And just blessings as we go through this meeting, Lord, and bless our state, our county, and our city. These are the other blessings we ask of your name. Amen.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Here.
Commissioner Thor?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Max?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Sathely?
Here.
Do they have one here in opportunity to review the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Thor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sathely?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
All right, we have an update to the agenda this evening. The first item, PL 1766, the applicant has asked that it be tabled. The next, under variance, PL 1748, the applicant has asked for it to be tabled also there out of town. We'll start with PL 1754, 1946 Wooton Road variance. Request for fence variance to encroach 10 foot into the setback. Okay. So let's have a motion to approve the tabling of the two items.
A motion.
There's gonna be a third, though. We need to add to it.
Well, so we might as well add that one while we're in it. And the subdivision, PL 1767, is going to be tabled also.
Mr. Ben, do you just need it 30 days or 16 days?
30 days. I think so.
Okay.
And just for anybody that may be here to talk about it, November 14th is that next planning commission date. So it's the same date on November 14th. And if anything changes in the meantime, we will send out letters or we'll post out our papers.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
For the three items?
Yes, sir.
They kind of emptied it out.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Thor?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sathely?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
All right, so the first item is PL 1745, 1946 Wooton Road variance. Request for fence variance to encroach 10 foot into the setback. The subject property is located on the south side of Miller's Way, east side of Wooton Drive, more specifically 1946 Wooton Drive in Section 25 Township 2 and Range 8. George Waltz is the owner. Mr. Cados, will you present the planning staff's report and comment?
Yes, sir. This is PL 1754. The request is to encroach 10 additional feet into the setback at 1946 Wooton Road. I did include the criteria for approval or denial of a zoning, excuse me, a variance, that these special conditions and circumstances are peculiar to this land structure buildings involved. The literal enforcement of these provisions and these standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by their properties. The special conditions and circumstances don't result in the actions of the applicant and that this, granting of this variance would not confer on the applicant any special privilege that's otherwise denied by the ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. As you can see, there's an existing fence. It does not show up on the aerial since the house is so new, but the fence does encroach 10 foot into the required front yard. It's double frontage. And so 10 foot is allowable by ordinance. They want to encroach an additional 10 feet to include a new 20-foot section on the front of the house to account for an RV parking pad. As you can see, the, like I said, the fence is already existing 10 foot out. The additional 10 foot is what the variance request is. And so it would be roughly 45 feet in length at the front of the home. It would be 20 foot in width. And then at the rear of the home, it would be additional 10. The applicant did respond to the approval or denial criteria in your staff report. And they did it with sketch at 1946 to give you an idea of generally how the fence would be in orientation with the house and the street. The applicant's here, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Cados? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
George Waltz, 1946 Wooton Drive.
I do have a question. So I drove by your house previously and looked. So the fence, is it, if you're facing your house on Wooton Drive, you're asking for the fence to be on the left side?
Correct.
Is there gonna be an additional driveway curb cut over there? Because your driveway's on the opposite side.
It is. Currently, I didn't ask for an additional driveway curb cut on that. I wanted to see if we could get the variance for this and then take a look at, you know, what's gonna be required if I do get that. I didn't know if that was part of what I needed to ask with this, where that would be something done separately.
I'm not sure Austin might can answer that.
We refer to the city engineer, and he approves or doesn't approve the curb cut based on the, how close it is to the intersection.
So the RV pad and the fence, is it gonna go next to the house or in the backyard?
Yes, next to the house. On the south.
So not in the backyard. It's gonna be right next to your house?
Be right next.
How many feet from the new proposed section to Miller's Street, Miller's Way? How many feet is that?
From the new proposed section out to the corner of that lot, somewhere between 30 to 40 feet.
What's the current, Austin? Is it 45 feet from the road?
It would, probably about 45 to 50 feet would be the current fence and the additional 10, we'll put it about what he said.
So 45 is the minimum. Is that the?
The way it works is you can encroach 10 yard, 10 feet into the front yard. So if you have a corner lot, you have two front yards, you can come 10 foot out with a fence, as long as you're still 15 feet from the right of way. So 15 is the number from right of way.
So we're still within the right of way even with this?
This would be, he would still be outside of it. He would, so the 15 is the closest you could get, and he'd be about 45 behind that.
I'm just, I'm just not certain about the being right next to the house and not in the backyard and about, because if there's gonna be another curb cut, it's gonna be just, I don't know, roughly however long your garage is, 25 foot away from the other one on that corner there, too.
Austin, did you say the city engineer did not approve the curb cut?
He hasn't even reviewed it yet.
Okay, okay.
The city allows an RV? I thought we, I thought we didn't allow RVs.
How big is the RV?
40 feet.
Yeah, 20 is the maximum we'd allow on the parking in the residential zone unless you can't see it. If it's in a building or behind something where you can't see it.
Right, that's why it needs to be behind the fence, correct?
Yeah, depends if it's visible based on the topography, but if it's still visible, 20 would be the most.
Yeah, with the height of the RV, I'm sure you're still gonna be able to see it with the six foot.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's no doubt you can see it.
I don't know.
I don't think this is gonna accomplish your goal, then.
My suggestion, just to drive by your home in the neighborhood, I mean, you got a huge backyard there. I think, and it'd be more allowable by the city engineer, probably. I just, I don't know if they're gonna allow a curb cut in the RV park right next to your house. If it's on the back of your property in the backyard, maybe off of Miller, was it Miller's Way?
Mm-hmm.
Because you have a very long, your backyard's real long, so if it, it just, I don't, that's, I don't, yeah. Especially like, you know, I have an RV, too, but I keep it in store. But it's, you know, six-foot fence isn't gonna hide that thing.
No, it's not.
Or even eight foot's not gonna hide it. I mean, an RV's probably 12 foot tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Max, kind of the same thing. I would, you've probably already thought of it, but my recommendation would turn it, I don't know what direction, turn it sideways and set it in the back, and then you could do a curb cut out to Miller's Way. But knowing that your RV's 40 feet, that's another discussion, because that's twice as big as the ordinance that you can see from the street.
Understood.
Six-foot fence, and what is it, like a motorhome type?
It is a motorhome, yes, correct. I think it'd be better, yeah, something on the non-street spacing side. Okay. That is a little bit concerning. And I get it, there's, RV's parked at the corner of Robinson and Thunder, Timberline all the time.
But I think that, I think that's a newer ordinance.
It's a new ordinance, yeah.
The RV over 20 feet or can't.
Yeah, it's relatively new.
This year. I don't know, but just, not that, this summer, a couple months, two months.
So is the fence just for the RV kind of to accommodate that is what you were doing?
Yeah, I'm trying to accommodate the HOA, right? So the HOA says you can have an RV, didn't put stipulations on it, but it needed to be behind the fence. Couldn't do it on the other side of the house because of the way that the ground slopes off, so looked at doing it on that side. Also took a look at doing it potentially in the backyard, but because this side was closer to the power, wanted to be able to, you know, plug it in and have power to it. So didn't realize that there was a 20-foot max on.
Yeah, so that raises a question about the HOA probably not knowing either.
Probably not, no. They didn't bring up any of that. They just said, "We don't care what you got, it's just gotta be behind the feds."
So that being the case on the 20-foot, no, you can't have the 40-foot, you just wanna withdraw this?
Yeah, I mean, there's no rea, I mean, it doesn't meet the stipulation, right? So, I mean, there's not much to do with that.
Just as, like I say, I have the same size motorhome, and I keep mine in the indoor storage in South, where I plug it up, because I want it out of the weather. Weather's the main thing, as you know, so.
Yeah.
Just as a friendly advice, so.
Sounds good.
Because I wouldn't have room to park it at my house again.
Appreciate your consideration. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Is with you?
He's with you.
The next item is PL 1759, Robertson Gen Road, request for a variance for allowable size of a accessory building. The subject property is located on the west side of Robertson Gen Road, south of Oak Grove Road, more specifically 3529 Robertson Gen Road in Section 23 Township 3, Range 8. Under Slaughter, Advanced Restoration Technology, representing Mark Haller is the owner. Mr. Cados, present the planning staff's report and comments.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance on the allowable size of an accessory building at 3529 Robertson Gen Road. The parcel's roughly 36 acres in size and is what we refer as a flag lot. The driveway comes off of Robertson Gen Road, but the primary portion of the property sits well off of the road, as you can see on the attached exhibits. In the discussion piece of the staff report, it's the same approval or denial criteria as our last application. And a little bit in particular on this application, the home is roughly 4,400 square feet, and with a lot size of 36 acres, the way the ordinance reads is there's a stair step on the size of the lot versus how many square feet of accessory building you get. In the case of 36 acres, you get 125% of the square footage of the home for a detached accessory building. So with 4,400 roughly square feet of home and an existing shop and garage of roughly 3,600 square feet, the request is to exceed that 125% allowance. The proposed building is a horse barn. It's 60 by 80 for 4,800 square feet. So it's a lot of numbers, apologize, but once you combine the existing shop and garage and the proposed building together, you get 8,400 square feet. And so that's roughly 193% of the square footage of the home, and they're allowed 125. So that's the variance request tonight, is to go from the allowed 5,440 feet to 8,400 feet. So for a horse barn on the property. I did include the full set of plans to give you an idea of the scale of what it is. It's a gabled roof with two overhangs on each side, and it's a metal steel building. And in the back of your staff report, let's see here, the flag lot showed the 36 acres. The structure's going roughly in the middle of the property. And so the secondary, what we thought was gonna be a variance request at first of where the building would be located behind the principal structure, it's difficult to find out where the front, rear, and side is on a lot like that. And so the only variance request is for the size. And so the proposed building, 4,800 square feet, like I said, exceeds that 125%. The applicant is here tonight, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Cados? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
Hello, I'm Mark Hallers with Advanced Restoration. Our company's at 6402 State Line Road in Walls, Mississippi. We're looking to put the barn on 3529 Robertson Gen Road in Hernando for Mr. Jacob Johnson.
Are there living quarters in the barn?
No.
I mean, this is just a straight barn?
It's gonna be a barn, an eight-stall barn with tech and storage, hay storage and stuff.
They didn't have like a, they didn't have any kind of plat map or anything like that on this one.
There was one in the, when we sent out the email on Friday, but I don't see it.
Did it not print?
Oh, it did print, yeah.
We can pull it up for you real quick. I've got it mine, I don't know.
A plat map?
It's right across from the Saddle Club, but the driveway is like, gotta be a quarter of mile. So I mean, you're not gonna be able to see anything.
And that was mine, that was mine. That was my only question. It'd be visible.
Yeah, I mean, you have to drive a long way to get back there. It's a, it's a long driveway, long, narrow driveway.
Frankly, I commend you for trying to use the property and trying to make something out of it, do something with it rather than just turn it into subdivision.
Yeah, that's got a big, nice house on it. Yeah, that's a lot of acres for in the city.
This part is further out. Did you say further out?
No, it's across the street from the Saddle Club, but you can't, you know, you can't see anything from the road because it's so far, tucked so far back.
Yes.
Like a flag, you know, type.
It's gotta barely be within the city limits right there, right?
To be honest, I didn't think it was when they first submitted, but it is.
Just, I mean, right on the line. He has horses out there already, so he's wanting to get the barn by winter.
Those huge properties on that street.
It's gonna be a nice barn, too. I mean, it's not gonna be something that looks cheap. It's gonna be expensive. Pre-engineered metal building. It's a nice one.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, yeah, the, it's way, it's, the drive is way off the road. I actually, I've been to that property, it's been years ago.
It curves.
I'm looking at a satellite map, though we don't have the plat, but is it gonna be in that clearing back in there?
If you go in the, down the road, you see the little driveway. It's gonna be, you'll run right into the barn. It'll be 50 feet, 50 feet off the west perimeter, west property line. But you would, you know, that driveway would run in, straight into it. Not straight into it, you'd curve, curve a bit, so you're gonna be, you know, in the woods, basically. There's gonna be woods around, trees. So I know it's not.
Just looking for the way else. Come off Robertson Gen on the, on the drive, and then it makes a right hook back into the house? So you're talking about straight off that hook?
Exactly.
Straight up into the woods there, or?
Well, it's like right alongside the woods.
Okay.
There's a clearing, it'll be tucked in right by the woods, 50 feet from the west property line.
Considerable distance from the house.
Yeah, I didn't measure it, but it's, that's a long way.
You know the questions for the applicant?
You're good.
Anyone in support against this application, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety. Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the request by Mr. Haller for a variance to allowable size of accessory building. Subject property is located on the west side of Robertson Gen Road, south of Oak Grove Road, more specifically 3529 Robertson Gen Road in Section 23 Township 3, Range 8, A through D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Thor?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sathely?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
The motion to approve this item passes. Next item is PL 1769 Whitfield Commercial variance. Request for design variance on curb and gutter at the rear of the site at Whitfield Commercial Subdivision, first revision, locate on the south side of Whitfield Drive, west of Memphis Street. Nick Krugan, representing John Stevenson. Mr. Cados, you give us the plan and staff report and comments.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1769, and the request is for variance to where the curb requirement from the property, the rear property line, 621 Whitfield Drive. John Stevenson is tonight as the owner of the property, and you may remember, we previously approved this subdivision plot as a revision to combine those two lots to account for this development. The applicant did provide responses to each of the applicable criteria for approval or denial. And in your staff report, you can see on the parcel map that it still shows the two parcels divided. It's since been recorded, it's just not been updated in the GIA system, so that is one large parcel. In review of the certificate of development, the engineer approached us about a drainage concern and point source drainage to that creek in the rear, and the request is to waive the curb requirement so that the drainage will sheet flow into the ditch rather than be piped into an inlet and discharge at point. The site as a whole is proposed to be used as boat and RV storage, and so half of the space is roughly will be covered, the other half will not. And then the ditch, as you can see in the provided topography map on the grading and drainage plan, the ditch immediately abuts the site in the rear. And so the request is to waive the curbing requirement on the back end to let that sheet flow rather than go into an inlet. It is currently under certificate of development review, and pending this variance, it will be released for building permitting, but all other aspects of the site do meet the ordinance other than the curb on the rear of the site. As I mentioned, John's here if you have any questions, and I'm available as well.
Any question, Mr. Cados? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
John Stevenson, 1589 Johnston Road, Hernando. So our, the reason we're requesting this is after discussions with Joe Frank, city engineer, and my engineer, we had some concerns about the cost of the way the site is and the rest of the drainage for the entire subdivision has worked, is it, we did a, basically, we did a model that showed that it's actually more efficient and better for potential erosion issues if we sheet drain this and spread the water discharge over the entire back of the property rather than hitting it with curb into, into small inlets, that we're afraid, because that is a blue line, a regulated blue line, that we might end up causing additional erosion and environmental issues on the back. So after consultation with Joe Frank, our engineers, we came up with this. Once we made sure that the model showed that that, those numbers verified that, that's why we're here asking for this.
The ditch is railroad, too, right?
Yes, the ditch is right adjacent to the railroad. Yeah, we're trying to not create new problems back there.
Is, so the property next to it, that's the City Public Works or something?
Yeah, the City Public Works to the north. You have the rail to the west.
Is there's, is there's just drainage the same way that you're requesting here's drainage, or they have curb and gutter?
There's no curb and gutter.
Yeah.
None of the surrounding properties have curb and gutter in the back.
So will there be a distance that's left untouched to help control so that it doesn't?
Well, what we're gonna have to do is, we have to give a slope that's determined by the Core and MDUQ to get a certain runoff. Certain areas will have to be ripraped in as well to make sure that we don't end up with erosion issues as well. But that's all city engineering will determine all that.
You know the question for the applicant?
Thank you.
Anybody in support against this item, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety. Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I'll make a motion to approve a request to waive the curb requirements along the back property line. Subject property is located on the west side of Memphis Street, south side of Whitfield Drive, more specifically 621 Whitfield Drive, in Sections 12 Township 3 and Range 8, based upon findings in A, B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Thor?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sathely?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
The motion to approve this item passes. Our last item is PL 1767 Deer Creek Subdivision. First revision request to reclassify a common open space lot. The subject property is listed as parcel number 3073071400011801, locate on the south side of Fawn Lane, east of Deer Creek Drive, currently addressed as 45 Fawn Lane. David Stone, the owner of the property. Mr. Cados, you present the planning staff report and comments.
Yes, sir. This is a request for final plot approval, first revision of Section C, Deer Creek Subdivision, PL 1768. Applicant's here tonight, Mr. Dave Stone. And generally speaking, this lot was originally plotted as a piece of common open space. It's about 5.28 acres. It encompasses roughly three tenths of an acre on the frontage, which seems to be a buildable lot, but is actually included with the rest of this common open space. It was all listed as a lot of common open space on that plat from July of 2000. Mr. Stone purchased it from a per, from the person who got it off the tax roll. So the HOA has since dissolved and quit paying the taxes on that 5.28 acre parcel. A resident bought the entire 5.28 acres, and then Mr. Stone bought it from that person and has been maintaining it for quite some time. Currently, it's being used as just a parking space, and Mr. Stone's requesting tonight to reclassify that common open space into a simple buildable lot in the subdivision. The discussion and conditions are all pretty standard, and some of them don't apply since it's already a fully improved subdivision with sidewalk and curb and gutter. But one thing we would recommend as staff is that if approved, that all covenants on this lot go to match the existing subdivision of Deer Creek, Section C, so if and when something is built, it would, it would match the existing subdivision. And so on the proposed plat, you'll see that the 5.28 acre parcel, the primary access on the buildable lot that the applicant's claiming is on Fawn Lane, which is immediately adjacent to Lot 42. And the Lot 207 is previously referenced as COS Lot 5.28 acres, and Lot 207 is sequenced in the Deer Creek subdivision as the, as the next lot on the tax roll. So the request is to change that subdivision lot from, from common open, uh, common open space to a buildable lot. We did get the question about the common open space requirement on a subdivision. In a PUD is where that 10% comes in, and if someone wanted to change common open space in a PUD, it would actually be through a rezoning, since you're changing the use. In the case of Deer Creek, it's actually straight subdivision. It's an R15. one thing we would recommend as staff is that if approved, that all covenants on this lot go to match the existing subdivision of Deer Creek Section C, so if and when something is built, it would, it would match the existing subdivision. Um, and so, on the proposed plat, you'll see that the five point two-eight acre parcel, the primary access on the buildable lot that the applicant's claiming is on Fawn Lane, which is, uh, immediately adjacent to lot forty-two, and, um, the lot two oh-seven is previously referenced as COS lot, five point two-eight acres, and lot two oh-seven is, uh, sequenced in the Deer Creek Subdivision as the, as the next lot on the tax roll. So, the request is to change that subdivision lot from, from common open, uh, common open space to a buildable lot. Um, we did get the question about the common open space requirement on a subdivision, um, in a PUD is where that ten percent comes in, and if someone wanted to change common open space in a PUD, it would actually be through a rezoning, since you're changing the use. Um, in the case of Deer Creek, it's actually straight subdivision, it's an R fifteen, I believe, uh, but it's not as a part of a planned overlay, and so, the use of the property is allowed to be a buildable lot, but the classification of the plat didn't, and so, Mr. Stone is requesting to change that classification. So, it's not technically a zoning change, and that ten percent common open space rule doesn't really apply, but it is still a common open space lot, and so we could administratively change that for a building permit. He does have to request before you, you all and the Board of Aldermen to, to amend the plat. So, um, Mr. Stone is here, if you have any questions for him, and I'm available as well.
Any question, Mr. Codos? Would the applicant please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety?
So you want my name and address? Uh, David Stone, I live at sixty Fawn Lane, right across from the property we're talking about here. I've been taking care of that property for twenty-six years, cutting the grass, cutting down trees that get struck by lightning, and I'm seventy-one years old now, and I just, I can't hardly take care of it no more. And so, it's just sit, it's gonna be sitting there vacant, I am still taking care of it, still cutting the grass, s- s- still putting fertilizer on, everything over, still taking care of it, but I'm not able to continue doing that much longer, so, health reasons, so I, I need to sell the property. I can't sell it unless somebody can build on it.
So it looks like there's one location that can be built on, right there on Fawn Lane?
It's directly across from my house, yes, yes.
So what would be the rest, would that just be one?
Sir?
Would that be just be one lot, one house lot?
Well, it'd just be one house lot, but it's, it's, like you said, it's five point two acres. The very back portion of it, and I mean, off of Terra, there's a, a way to get to the back part off of Terra, there's not a curb cut there, but there's an opening to get in there. Years and years ago, that was a drainage pool back there on the back part of it, on the very back part of it, but that's, uh, not anywhere near the part that's buildable there on the front of Fawn Lane.
Yeah, there's probably not enough room between those houses off, on that, there's probably not enough room on Terra Street there to build a house.
No, there's not really.
Between the, if the required, to be the required.
Yeah, there's not, 'cause there's, it's like, uh, sixty feet between the houses, the, the part that I own, it's like sixty feet between the two houses on Terra, so that wouldn't be enough back there anyway.
So this would be sold as one lot and one house be admitted?
It'd be, it'd be sold as one lot, five point two acres, but the only buildable part, like Mr. Olson said, is just sort of right there in the front on Fawn Lane.
I drove through there, I seen.
Uh, yeah, it'd be a corner lot.
There's a truck parked there now, where.
Yeah, that's, I've, I've been parking my truck there for three years, I think, I had it, had it fixed.
I've seen it, I mean, it's very well manicured, you've done a good job.
Yeah, I put that fence up about fifteen years, that's what I said, I've been taking care of it for all this time, and, uh, even when, when, uh, the people that bought it originally at the tax sale, they tried to sell it to me, and I was upset because I wasn't offered the property before the last mayor sent it to Jackson for the tax sale, 'cause I would've paid the taxes on it and took it then, okay, but nobody said nothing to me, they just sent it to the tax sale in Jackson, and the company down there in Jackson bought it. When they found out that, uh, what it was and they couldn't, you know, build two or three houses on it, then they didn't want it. And so the, there's this person that I bought it from lived on Star Landing Road, and he wanted the five acres adjacent to his property, and the only way this, these people in Madison would sell him the piece of property he wanted was if he bought this piece of property that's across from my house too. So he bought it. It's kinda coerced into buying it, but anyway, he bought it, and I bought it from him, but, uh, he came down there for a year and cut the grass, so when I said I've been taking care of it for twenty-six years, he did maintain it and cut the grass over for one year, and then after that, I, he didn't want no part of it, and I bought it from him.
Just some understanding.
Sir?
Just some understanding, this gets converted, it's a sellable one lot, five point two acres.
Correct.
Only one small area of that five acres up by Fawn Lane gets developed, that whoever buys it buys the whole five acres?
That's correct.
And you can't develop any more of that?
Not the back part, but that is, I don't know where he's got, your figure, but I mean, where I put grass is a lot more than just the, the front part, there's somebody gonna have a big backyard.
Right, so they would have to maintain five acres.
The three tenths, I think, which you're referring to was the buildable area.
Yeah, that's just a built.
Right there.
Yeah, but see, I, I, I cut all the way halfway back up there, and it, it's.
Right, I was just trying to give them an idea.
Oh, yeah, I understand, no, no, I understand, yeah, what you're saying, just the buildable part.
Yes, sir.
But, uh.
I think Commissioner Thorne, kinda what you see on the aerial view is what he's been maintaining, the rest is woods, tall trees or ditch, you know, like, that, that one little lot is really the only buildable space.
Is that right? There's nothing buildable off Cross Creek?
Sir?
There's nothing buildable off.
No, no, that's just a little, a triangle piece of property, hillside in a wooded area, you couldn't build anything over there. I wouldn't think. It's right at the end of Biloxi Street.
Plus, if, if he was to sell it, he's, the person's able to build one house, they would have to come back before us or.
You only can put one house on, on the single lot, even if.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
But if they tried to divide it, they would have to come back before us.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Is that it? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve, deny, table this item?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, final plat for Deer Creek Subdivision, section C, first revision by Dave Stone, the owner of the property, subject staff conditions, subject property is listed as parcel three zero seven, three zero seven, one four zero, 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 one, one, eight, zero, one, located on the south side of Fawn Lane, east of Deer Creek Drive, currently addressed as forty-five Fawn Lane, and did we need to put in there the condition of the HOA?
Probably the covenants, I think.
It was in here under the discussion. I included it at number three, and so if you did one through thirteen, that would cover. Okay, one, one through thirteen, I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
All right, is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorne?
Aye.
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sathley?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
The motion to approve this item passes.
And this will be heard by the Board of Aldermen next Tuesday at the seventeen, uh, same time, same.
Thank you, thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Huh? Take it easy. Don't work so hard.